We are going to start the evening with cannabis, move on to liquor control sewer, and then this town select board meeting.
Exactly how most of my parties go.
There you go. Name Doug Bailey, board chair. So we're going to call the cannabis meeting to order. Would someone like to make a motion on the agenda?
I move to adopt the agenda as submitted.
Second. Names.
Cecil Renner Smith, vice chair, moving to adopt the agenda as submitted.
Jeff Haylon, seconds.
Mr. Hopkins.
Mr. Chair Seth Hopkins. Would the board consider adding a renewal to this agenda that did not make it? The application number is S dash zero 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 one one nine six six. It's an integrated licenses renewal. For FWR DBA grassroots Vermont DBA hello hi. It is for a medical dispensary cultivation manufacturing operation that has been in operation in Brandon for some time.
Added to the agenda.
Thank you.
Item two, reoccurring matters. Do we have any emotion on the March twenty fourth cannabis minutes?
I'll move that we approve those minutes.
Second that.
Motion and a second. All in favor of approval of the minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose no one. Now, item three, the two renewals, the one that's in the packet and the one new one that Mr. Hopkins just had. Action.
I'll move that we move both of those items to consent agenda so we can approve them as soon as possible.
I'll second that.
Okay. We have a motion and a second on the two renewals. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose no one. Public comment on cannabis. There never is any. None heard. Item five.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Cannabis is done. Liquor control. Would I have a motion on the agenda?
Move that we adopt the liquor control commissioners meeting agenda as submitted.
All right, well, second.
Motion and a second, all in favor of adopting the agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose no one. Reoccurring matters is the minutes from the May twelfth liquor meeting.
Move to approve the minutes from liquor control commissioners meeting minutes of May twelfth, twenty twenty five.
Second.
Motion and a second on the minutes, all in favor of the minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose no one. Item three, we have three applications.
I move that we approve the special event slash catering permits for Red Clover Ale Company, Common Ground Restaurant and Pub, and the Brandon Artist Guild.
I'll second that.
Motion and a second on the applications, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose no one. Public comment on liquor. Never is here either.
Make a motion to adjourn liquor. Second.
Motion to adjourn, all in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
The sewer commissioners meeting, agenda.
I move to adopt the agenda as submitted.
Second.
Motion and a second on the agenda, all in favor.
Aye.
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 Reoccurring matters is approval of the minutes of the April fourteenth sewer commissioners meeting.
Make a motion to approve those minutes.
I'll second that.
All in favor of approval of the minutes, say aye.
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 Pose no one. Item three, consider a auto sampler purchase order. Mr. Hopkins, tell us about that.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the board. This is a purchase order in your meeting packet for the two hands-free vacuum samplers to Russell Resources. It exceeds my spending limit. And this amount will be covered in substantial portion due to the trustees of public funds voting on May fifteenth to approve our application for $20,000 toward this equipment. So the town wastewater budget will be reimbursed for the equipment after July first, and we will essentially need to pay for the installation services. There are three quotes and the Russell, Russell Resources is the, is the one that was recommended by the wastewater operators.
Okay. Pleasure, the board. Do we know what the installation cost is going to be?
We do not. It should be in the low thousands.
We have a motion.
Make a motion to, we'd motion to approve this order, right?
I'll second that.
Motion and a second to purchase the two samples. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Pose no one. Motion to adjourn.
Public comment.
Oh, public comment on sewer. Forgot it. No public comment on sewer.
Motion to adjourn sewer.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And now, the select board meeting, first would be to adopt the agenda.
I move that we adopt the agenda as submitted.
Second.
Motion and a second to adopt the agenda, any changes? Nothing to add? Good. All in favor of approval of the agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose no one. Select board members remarks. Small crowd, so I probably don't have to say as much as I usually say about being nice and treating everyone with respect, but I will still chuck it out there just for kicks. And we have a lot of items on the agenda tonight, but none that I think are very hot and exciting, so we'll start going through them. If anyone else has something they'd like to say. Okay, item three, reoccurring matters, first is the select board minutes of May twelfth.
I have a correction to the minutes. What page it's on? Page.
I have it on page four of the packet, but I don't.
Four packet, at the beginning of the last paragraph begins Bianca, resident of Brandon, that's actually Beata, B E A T. Beata, B E A T. Her last name is Jensen, J E N S E N.
I think I have one, but I will leave it to the, anybody else's memory, on page three. It says Claire Astong asked if what would be done in public, and she did think it was worth reinventing the wheel, I thought it was, did not.
No, she, she.
You wanted us to reinvent the wheel?
She wanted us, oh, no, she did not.
She did not.
Did not. So she said did not, okay. Any other corrections? Then, all in favor of the minutes with those two changes, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose no one. The warrant. Anyone like to make a motion to pay the bill?
I move that we approve the warrant in the amount of one hundred and fifty nine, one million five hundred and ninety thousand, seven hundred and seventy dollars and twenty four cents.
Do we have a second? I will second. It's set high for people in the audience to know because this is one of the times when we pay the appropriations that were approved for different organizations. Those come into our treasure and then we pay them out.
And also the school tax.
School tax.
The vast majority of it is the school tax.
Questions on the bills? None heard. All in favor of paying the warrant for a million five hundred and ninety thousand, seven hundred and seventy dollars and twenty four cents? Say aye.
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 Pose no one. Town managers report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I submitted the report ahead, and I just have some small number of updates. So at the beginning of my report, it talked about two vacancies on the trustees of public funds. And due to that change in situation, the select board will keep open the window for applications through four P M. on Thursday, June fifth. Applications to be submitted to the town manager by email or in person. However, as an update, there are now three vacancies on the trustees of public funds. So for awareness of the community, there are three vacancies. I don't know whether the select board will want to change that window further or not, but you can discuss that tonight. Just to highlight for the community, I did meet with our insurance company and our police chief and our police officer out at the Sanderson Covered Bridge, and we are on the right track with some protective measures to try to avoid some collisions with that bridge. The update on delinquent tax collection is that for the fiscal year, we've collected one hundred eighty one thousand, nine hundred sixty one dollars in delinquents. And receipts since the attorney's letter are fifty one thousand, six hundred seventy six. I have two encouraging notes about staffing. Chief Kachajian of the Police Department will be making a conditional offer of employment to a level two certified officer tomorrow. The officer would be coming to us on a part-time basis at first if the, if all of the procedures turn out to be good. And our highway chief Jeremy Disorda also has a verbal commitment from a well-qualified individual who may be able to start work in the highway department as early as tomorrow.
Excellent.
Brian Kilpeck and Jeremy Disorda did the first of the Goshen roadwork that we had contracted for, so our next commitment to them is after July first to do another road grading and roadside mowing, and it worked out well for them. We did sell the uninspected, uninspectable cruiser on municipal bid, and the winning bid was one thousand, four hundred dollars, which I think is significantly more than we would have had from scrapping that cruiser. And for your awareness, as a heads up, never too early to think about budgeting. The two health insurance companies that operate in Vermont have requested rate increases for twenty twenty six. Blue Cross has requested thirteen point seven percent. M V P has requested seven and a half percent. We do currently have town staff on M V P, except the police department is on Blue Cross still. And that's the end of my report.
I have a question about the Sanderson Bridge.
Yes.
Are, are we getting trucks coming at it from both sides?
Yeah, I think it has mostly been coming from the west, but we, the most recent one where the truck got stuck was actually coming from town.
And do we have the same type of warning signs coming from the west that we do have coming from the east?
Yes.
Okay.
The insurance risk adjuster, or risk assessment person, anyway, he actually, when he met us there, he said, wow, I don't know how anybody's hitting this bridge, you've got this very well signed, because he came in past the signs. The drivers were attentive to them, I think they would have had opportunities to.
We think it's just a matter of following the law.
Expect so. So what we're talking about at this point is widening the turnaround on the town side of the bridge, if the wetland permit can be secured. And installing on both sides at some correct point, probably at Short Swamp Road on that side and back of this turnaround on the town side, a telephone pole with a swinging bar of some kind that they would strike first. And they, they encouragingly may have some funds available, the insurance company may have some funds available to assist us.
Cool. Look at that.
I would like to read something in your report that you didn't read, because I find it very interesting that the, regarding the ethics complaint, the state municipal ethics commission has unexpectedly suspended municipal services, both advisory, opinions, and receiving of complaints. So the state has said that they do not have the manpower or the expertise to handle any ethics complaints, and yet they put their law into effect, so interesting tidbit to throw out there. Any other questions for the town manager from the board? Questions for the town manager on his report from the public? Moving on. Community development report, Mr. Moore.
Thank you, Doug. That's my report for today, the twenty sixth of May. On May fourteenth, the town closed on the purchase of the point seven four acres that will complete the Seminary Hill Park. This is something that's been in the making ever since the select board approved matching a grant that we received in December and working out with the attorneys, and we closed on the property, and we have submitted for our reimbursement for the fifty percent match, and we'll be getting that soon. So we're excited about that park finally being ours. On May sixteenth, we received the official grant award notification for the purchase of a van that will serve as a rec replacement vehicle and eventually a public transit connector. The town will purchase a white VW ID Buzz from Lundgren in Rutland. A big thank you to Otter Valley advisories, Mr. Rose, Mr. Purda, and Miss St. Raymond for their work on May sixteenth, Otter Valley does a school-wide community service day where they send people out, advisories out. We were lucky to have some hard workers that were able to stain the Thomas overlooked deck in between Kennedy Park and the back parking lot. They spread wood chips at Seminary Hill and stained ten of the fifteen downtown park benches, which will be replaced, finished and replaced this week. On June seventh, the former Friends of the Town Hall sponsored silent movie will be showing upstairs at seven P M. Underworld starring George Bancroft, Evelyn Bent, and Clive Brook is the director, Joseph Von Sternberg's groundbreaking tale of big city mobsters widely considered the father of all gangster pitchers. It's a free will offering. The proceeds will support the twenty twenty six future silent movie series. Our Lego Robotics Camp is back, August fourth through the eighth at the Brandon Town Hall. Registration for all programs can be found at brandonrec dot com. And the upstairs of the town hall will be unavailable for use due to the great Brandon auction prep and sale, and that'll be through July thirteenth. We still have availability downstairs. Starting sixteenth of June, I believe.
Isn't there something there this Saturday, isn't there an event there?
Yeah, oh, so this, yeah, I warned it in my last one, I forgot to put in this one. There is a concert tonight on Saturday, the thirty first, sponsored by Red Clover Ale Company upstairs. Randy, somebody in the some things. Yeah, the Hop City Hellcats, really cool name, Maricana, if I recall correctly. Also, make note, we did have a successful parade that, to make sure that the public knows that the parade is put on by the Brandon American Legion, we do provide some support, some town support in the way of some sound and traffic control through our police, but it was a wonderful day, the sun came out, and for the one hundred, at least one hundred and twenty third year, the flower girls were able to put flowers around the memorial, and it was beautiful, and it's the best thing we do in Brandon. Thank you.
Going to go back one thing. The openings for trustees of public funds, you're going to put it on a front page forum in the reporter?
We, we certainly can, so the, the third resignation came to me just today.
Right.
So we can make another announcement, let people know, and then if the board wants to, I don't know, if you feel like June ninth is adequate time for people, or sorry, it'd be June fourth, I think, to get the application in. Does that sound?
Another two weeks and do it.
Well, there's nothing saying we have to appoint all three immediately either, so depending on who applies and what we do, I think we can start with what we have and go from there.
Good. Questions for Mr. Moore? Questions for Mr. Moore on his report from the public?
Thank you.
Item six, request for a tier.
Oops, sorry. Whoa, whoa, whoa. Apologies.
Um, I was just wondering, did the purchase of the land to finish off the dog park, did that come in under budget, or just wondered what that total was?
So it's right now, without our attorney's fees, it's twenty five thousand and ninety seven dollars or something like that. And the town farm fund money that was used to be the match for that will eat the rest of the attorney's fees when those come in.
Oh, okay, I was just wondering, thanks.
Hey. Request for tier one B designation, Brandon Act two fifty, Seth Hopkins.
You, Mr. Chair, members of the board. I attended the Brandon Planning Commission on May thirteenth, they had a really great meeting with Rutland Regional. Logan Solomon came down and talked about all the details related to Act one eighty one, which is basically a relaxation of Act two fifty requirements in certain areas, and the towns have to opt in to choose that. So the way that I would describe this is that this will help Brandon to facilitate the growth that we want where we want it by streamlining permit costs in terms of time and money. The chair of the planning commission, Jack Schneider, is here tonight. In the packet behind my one-page memo, probably the most important thing to look at is the map that immediately follows, there's a colored map, and the four colors that are purple or purple adjacent would be the areas. So it's the designated downtown, which is the, the kind of gray purple right in the center, and then the village center, which surrounds that. Then the planned growth area, which is the pinker, the pinker one, kind of, there's a little piece of it in Brandon, and then a larger piece of it around Forestale, and then a village area, no, I've done that wrong. The downtown is the dark purple, the village center is Forestale. Okay. The center of Forestale is the village center. Then the planned growth area is the lighter area, and the village area surrounds that. So those four areas that are purplish would receive the relaxed permitting where Act two fifty would no longer apply, it would just be local permitting, it's not going to be the Wild West where anything goes. These are areas where the town has infrastructure, including water and wastewater, and this would essentially be infill in areas where we already have some density. So there are areas outside of those areas where Act two fifty status quo basically will remain the same for a lot of the town. And then there are some other areas that are rural conservation and agriculture forestry, so like the eastern third of the town at elevation, and the western third of the town, like over in the swamp, those would have actually some heightened Act two fifty requirements as part of Act one eighty one, and those, the towns don't get an option to opt into, those are going to happen regardless. So what the town's option is basically, is do you want to opt into tier one B or request, a request that we be considered for tier one B so that the purple areas are easier to develop, or do you want to leave it status quo so where Act two fifty applies, Act two fifty would still apply in the downtown? Hope I didn't mangle that too much, but Jack did, if you want to add anything to it, certainly.
Now, this is Jack Schneider. Like every town has to do, a town plan every eight years, so does the county, and they've done it in, they're doing it in four phases. The third phase was the future land use map one, and they broke this out for each of the individual towns. The planning commission sees no downside for going tier one B. We do have very strong land use ordinances in place, so it's not like, and it really primarily affects ten acres or under lots, where you could build up to fifty units and not have to go through the whole Act two fifty expense. So we think that there is no downside, so we recommend that the select board submit the form to opt into tier one B.
Mayor's board?
I move that the town of Brandon request to be considered for tier one B designation as described in the act.
We have a second.
I'll second it.
Discussion. This is basically where we're at, almost from what we did last year, pretty close?
It's kind of in the same vein, it's absolutely in the same vein, but it is, it's additional. So what we were talking about, where we went from the one acre to the ten acre, was when the Act two fifty review would be triggered, right? And so we got up to the ten acres. But now, with Act one eighty one, the state has some additional, and you can see there's a little chart on the pages that are kind of blue with red headers, location based Act two fifty tiers. We're not eligible for tier one A. We, we don't have a building inspector that works for the town, we don't have regulations about the way stuff's going to look, we don't have adequate staff to, you know, do that. So that tier one A is really for the biggest cities and towns in Vermont. Tier one B, you have to have this water wastewater infrastructure and permanent zoning and subdivision regulations and so forth. And we do have all of those things, and this would be, as, as you point out, this would be basically kind of like the next step of, of what the select board did in moving Brandon from being a one acre review town to a ten acre review town.
Yes. You got to come up and state your name.
Ricky, you just sort of, did I hear you correctly that that would be allowing up to fifty units on a?
Fifty units or fewer on ten acres or less for housing and mixed-use development would be exempt from Act two fifty, so it would still be subject to local zoning.
Okay. Um, I mean, this seems like a significant change to me, without any input from the general public. And I'll mention again, the limited number of parking spaces we have in Brandon, so when we think about opening this up, we're going to make life that much more uncomfortable for the people who already live here. So I definitely feel like this is something that everyone in town should have some input on.
Additional comments? Yes, Jack.
So the, the blow that was approved this year follows the state mandate of five units per acre. So if you have ten acres, that's up to potentially fifty. Fifty units on ten acres would probably be multi-story. So, but again, this is something that the state mandates for these areas to be up to five units for an acre.
So basically, this is totally in keeping with our land use ordinances, which are in keeping with what the state law requires. And it's also my understanding that a lot of this information was presented to the planning commission at a open, properly warned meeting, and that the R R P C has also addressed this at several meetings?
I have a question. Go ahead.
Hang on.
They've had meetings around the, the county. This was a public meeting on the thirteenth. They've done a very good job, I think, of publicizing the work that they're working on, but there will be continued Rutland Regional Planning Commission meetings as they get to the next phase, and I think that's probably in the next couple of months.
Okay, now Jan, go ahead.
So is there a limit of like what lot size you could build on? Because we're not a quarter acre lot size for housing, you know? We're not the big city, you know, you got a half acre or close to a half acre, there's still, houses are pretty close, but at least you have a little green space in between. So you put fifty on ten acres, unless you're going up like he suggested, then that makes a difference on, you know, how much the structure would take, you know, for a footprint, but I mean, you need to think of it that way, too, also.
So if I could, so this is not going to change the bluo, it's not going to change the Brandon land use ordinance at all, that was done in a process over the previous year and a half. That was done in a process over the previous year and a half. And that's where that kind of stuff gets addressed. What this is addressing is do you want to remove? Or do you want to retain Act two fifty review in addition to local zoning in these four targeted areas in this village center of Brandon and the village center in Forestale?
And if it's in the village center and it's all handled by town sewer, the more town sewer uses we have, then that has a possibility of lowering the cost of each user, right?
More users on the municipal sewer is always a good thing for a town in Brandon's position where we have plenty of capacity.
Additional comments?
I have another question.
Go ahead.
So what happens if the ten acres is outside the sewer? You know, like Forest Brook here, we have water, but we don't have sewer. So what does Act two fifty do if you're where you don't have both? Or does it kick in then?
Right, so that would be subject to Act two fifty in lots for lots of reasons. It would be subject to it because there's no public infrastructure that's needed. It would be subject to it because of the lot size that you're talking about, a ten acre lot being divided up. And it would be subject to it because it's outside those areas.
Thank you.
Yep.
No more comment. We have a motion and a second.
I think there's another question.
We have a hand.
Isn't there a limit to how high people can build in the Brandon land use ordinance?
The answer is the building height is thirty feet.
Question.
The question.
So the motion is to become a one Tier one B.
To to ask for designation, to request designation as Tier one B up to the state.
That is the motion. All in favor of the motion, say aye. Aye. opposed?
Real quick, Mr. Hopkins, do you have an idea of what the timeline of that actual designation process is?
We have to give it to them by July first, I believe, and then they'll act on it. Some of it is just the town saying, this is the date of our town plan. This is the date of our floodplain thing. And then RRPC has to also say, this is the date of our stuff. My, my understanding is that once that happens, it will get back to us in a matter of months. Not, not, not more than probably a half a year.
Thank you.
Probably in time for the next building season. Yeah.
Moving on, item seven, never too early to start thinking about the end of the year. A town report appropriation request information, I believe that's Ralph.
Yep. This comes from the last trustees meeting I was at. A lady spoke on, on when you pass in your appropriation request to be on the ballot, you have to turn in a financial statement with it. And she said she thought that should be become public information. So people knew what they were voting on. If, if, if somebody had pretty large amount in a thing that they would know and that would help them make their vote on yes or no. And I thought it was a good idea. So I wanted to start the discussion on it, on whether we thought so or not.
Now, let me ask a question. When we get those in now, are they not on record at the town clerk's office for anyone who wants to see it?
Right, so this is one of those things where it is public information, but the town doesn't publish it. And I think what the question is, is should the town publish it in the book? Or maybe on the website or whatever. So, right, they, they all turn it in to the town clerk. This has been the policy for a number of years. And Sue tells me that in all the years that it's been our policy, she really only recalls two times where someone came in and asked to look at the financial statement of an appropriation requesting agency. So it's, it's public, but it's not being accessed the way that we do it now.
I have a question. Are these like single-page financials or are they multi-page financials?
That was one of the concerns is that they're not even all in the same format, right? So somebody with QuickBooks will generate a balance sheet and a profit and loss in a different way than somebody who does a different system and so on and so forth. So these tend to be, they tend to run in the four to seven-page range for each agency. Usually a dozen or so, yeah.
Fourteen, fifteen, so we're talking about a sixty to seventy extra pages to the town report. And we no longer, the town is now on the hook for all the publishing costs of the town report, correct?
Right, so the fire district, because their fiscal year is different from ours and the school district for, you know, reasons of their own, they're not participating with us anymore. So it's just us with all the postage. We used to split the postage with the school district.
Okay, and so we're, how many pages was last year?
It was a hundred when we had the school district and it was fifty when we didn't.
Okay, so we're talking about doubling the size of it.
Conceivably.
Conceivably. I mean, is it possible to just make it better known that these financials are available?
I mean, it would be free to put them on the town's website somewhere, like on the budget page.
That'd be fine. I didn't even know you had to do that. That was a surprise to me when she said that.
I mean, that, that would be a piece of cake. It would be probably not super onerous to put like a balance sheet, like, like not the whole financial package, but something. But that would kind of be up to what the board thought was the most useful information to a voter.
And we could make sure that we have a very bold statement in our book telling everyone where to go to get that information, that they are public. I mean, which we don't really have at all now, I don't believe.
No, we don't.
And, and so basically, the, the the reason people might want to be looking at these is to assure themselves that the group that is requesting the appropriation has a, like, can show a specific need for that appropriation if they feel like they need to parcel out their money.
Part of it, part of it. And I think it would be good information if, if somebody is asking you for to vote on appropriation to give them money and they have a balance sheet of nine hundred thousand or something, that might change your mind.
Or if their budget shows kind of weird expenditures or.
So we're not taking action, but we're open to discussion.
Yeah, I just wanted to bring it up tonight.
We can continue to do that unless someone wants to make a motion of any kind at this point. I think it's great to be planning ahead.
I was, I was saying to Ralph when he added this to the agenda, like, this might be a good opportunity since we now know that the fire district's going to be a separate book. The school's going to do their separate thing. Might be a good opportunity for the select board to evaluate what it wants to accomplish with the town report. We don't publish the whole audit. You know, we just published the notice that the audit is available. I don't know exactly what the most useful parts of the town report book are. And I don't know that any of us does, but it might be a good chance to kind of take a fresh look at what you want to include and what you think would be helpful to voters.
Okay.
Maybe some of us could take some time to just flip through it and see.
Any comments? Yep. I see Vicky's hand again. Come on up.
So one, one entity that usually is on, I think, for appropriations is the, the VNA. So would part of their financial disclosure be like what they charge people for their hourly rates for different services?
That's not part of what we've asked for. So what we've usually asked for is like the organization's financial condition statement.
Okay, because I think
I know what you're asking.
That very interesting as someone who uses their services. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Moving on, item eight. Another question.
To me, it's not wise to add all that to the annual report just by making the statement that says, if you want to see the financial statement, it's available on the web, on the town's website. That should be sufficient for people if they're interested. And if they don't have a computer, they can go to the town office and get a copy of the financial statement. So it's available as long as you put that note, you know, by the appropriation that you can obtain it here. That should suffice without adding extra cost to the town.
I, I will say we do, that's a valid suggestion. I will say we do already publish a report from each of the appropriations requesting agencies. But that's their own kind of opportunity to, to talk to the community that they're asking money from.
Right, just a short blurb. Yeah. Okay, thanks.
That's, that's been part of the town report for a very long time.
Yeah.
Okay. Moving on. Award the purchase for a new
Everyone's wondering why I'm looking at this. It's because some of the things are sideways on screen. Well, yeah, I could do that, but that's really weird.
Purchase, award the purchase of a new cruiser, follow the sealed bid process. Mr. Hopkins.
Thank you, Ms. Bailey and members of the board. So you have a memo there from me. And then behind the memo are eleven different bids that the town received. It was a good open bid process where we got some real interest in furnishing a replacement cruiser to the town. The Energy Committee did a great job soliciting bids per our green fleet, green fleet policy. They provided you or they obtained a couple of quotes for you from dealers of electric vehicles that have been used by police departments. And then they provided a little discussion about who's using it where and what they're using it for and things of that nature. I have had a conversation with both Chief Kachajin and Officer Kelleher regarding their preferences. And that appears in my discussion in the memo there. So it's up to the board what you want to consider. I think that the green fleet policy does require consideration. I think at this time, based on what the officers have advised is their requirements. They believe that the two electric vehicles and he, Chief Kachajin did check out one of them in, in person. He's checked out the Blazer. He believes that it's too small. It's, if you know the way things are going in the car world, like you might think of a Blazer as being like a certain size SUV, SUV, right? But they've kind of remodeled things and some of the SUVs are getting smaller. They're more like crossover type things. So the main concern that they have, just so the community is aware and the board, is that with all the equipment that they wear, they feel like they need to have more space than is provided in the Blazer's passenger compartment for the driver.
So I have a question on price points.
Yeah.
So the two that E and G are the two that the officers.
Yeah.
And so those are both about sixty-two. The electric Blazer looks like after rebate, it's just over forty-five. But then we would have to expend an additional sixteen thousand to equip it up?
That's the lights and the computer mounting and the pass the prisoner partition and stuff, yes.
Okay, and so those are already on the
Right, so in the upfitting column, only the two electric cruisers are being offered to us without like all the police stuff. You know, the lights and the, and the prisoner partition and stuff. The other, the gasoline cars are being offered to us as a police package where that stuff is part of the price that's reflected in the previous column.
And I see there's also a hybrid.
There was a hybrid, yeah, option.
And it looks like the chief and officer Kelleher are.
So I think the reason that the hybrid was kind of eliminated from early consideration was that the price there was about ten thousand dollars higher than the price for either of the two chargers. Or in fact, the electric Blazer.
I'm showing it at sixty-four six, which is
Oh, no, I read the wrong line. Sorry, B is, B is the gasoline one. Yeah, so right. So that one is still in consideration, yes.
And, and is is that something that the chief and officer Kelleher?
So on the, on the hybrid, on the hybrid, his main concern was he felt that the maintenance costs would be higher. It would be a higher risk.
Would it be possible for the officers to have the opportunity to test drive these? Or maybe even test them for a few days out in the field? Before we make a hard decision one way or the other? I don't know if that's a dump.
Yeah, how do police car test drives work?
I have no idea, yes.
Some of these, some of these.
Offer to speed.
So the, the two electrics are, are being offered by Vermont dealerships. The not electric ones are all coming to us delivered from a distance out of state. So I don't, I don't know how that could work. I know that we have had chargers, we have had Ford, Dutch chargers, we had, have had Ford explorers in the fleet. I think they're kind of comfortable that they know what those are like to drive. The, the Blazer down at Alderman's. I mean, I think, I don't know how that, I don't know where the chief actually had the inspection of the Blazer where he looked at a Blazer. I don't know if it was Alderman's that he mentioned to you.
Was this all put together by the Energy Committee?
So the first two pages are me, the cover memo and the little chart. And then, right, the Energy Committee put together the package. Yeah.
I would like to compliment you on the packet because when the idea of an electric cruiser came up anytime in the past, we heard a great deal of negative comments about them and how they would not work in Vermont. And I thought, I think that the information you folks put together for us was, is really nice. And shows that they actually can work in Vermont. But what I would say, I, I would love to have our police chief. I know we were talking about buying two cars and now we're talking about buying one now. I, I would love to have our chief at some point go down to Wyndham County and, and try out the electric car that's down there or ride with the sheriff for an hour or two and see what they think. But I am also not really ready to have the the amount of phone calls and emails and yelling that a police car would, electric car would take right at this moment. So I would still possibly be in favor of the gas car. But if I were buying for myself, I would buy an electric car. That's just my own comments on the whole thing, but I appreciate all the work. This is some very good information here.
Yeah, I, I generally agree with Doug. I also think, you know, and I'm on the record saying this, that the police know better than what, than any schmo who's not a policeman does what they need and want to use in the field. I would, I would love for them to consider different options. But if this is, you know, if they're saying that the charger is the, the correct choice for them right now, then I'd have a hard time overruling that.
Yeah. I have one question. I think our mechanics here. The ones that they're saying they like the charger, wasn't it the charger that gave us the most trouble in the past? Of course, that doesn't, past performance does not guarantee future results, but.
So the charger that we had before was two thousand thirteen. Suspension parts, not really a lot of engine or transmission issues. But everything is way updated now and a lot newer generation of motors, transmissions. Were any of those all-wheel drive or were they offering rear wheels?
They were.
Yeah, all-wheel drive.
So did they list any, any warranties that came with these? Were they like three years, thirty-six, or did they offer more?
Good question.
That's not on this sheet. I don't, you, you can answer it.
So I, I didn't, I didn't provide all of that because it would have been a thick pile there. But they're all coming with manufacturers' warranties that are in the three-year, thirty-six thousand mile.
Do they offer extended ones? I know in the past that the town had bought extended ones from like Ford to go five years, hundred thousand. They were offering on fleet vehicles. I think they even did it on like the five-fifties for a couple of years.
That I don't know. I will, I will check what the bid says.
Because usually something like that, especially with these cars that have Because usually something like that, especially with these cars that have much more electrical to them, if you have that warranty, no matter really what the cost is, it covers you because one thing going bad, like a backup camera or something, you can run into two, three, four thousand dollars. So that extended warranty with all this electrical on it is pretty huge. So definitely look into the warranties and what's offered for extension of them.
The car that had two officers have, have said that they prefer is a Charger all wheel drives and, and you're saying at this point.
Currently, I work on three Chrysler products from a neighboring town police department and had a, we've had a handful of, I guess, electrical issues, but nothing crazy money. Nothing, let's say, over a thousand dollars to fix. So and those range from seventeen, twenty-two and twenty-three. So they're, they're not horrible.
Pleasure of the board.
I like option G, but I've got a question on the financial part of it. Looking at the police budget, I don't see where the money's in there yet. Maybe you can invite me. Wherever it is.
Yeah.
There's still one and a quarter percent over budget for the year. I know that'll be coming down, but I don't think it'll come down that much in just over a month.
Where there's room in the police budget is in the officer's salary line. So that was budgeted at three hundred fifty-four thousand dollars. As of tonight, it's at two hundred eighty-seven thousand dollars. So there's, there's the sixty thousand dollars is right there. We're not going to expend sixty thousand dollars on just Officer Kelleher.
No, I was, I was looking at the overall, overall police budget.
I, I understand that. That's, that's likewise, you know, it's at eight fifty-six and seven sixty-one. So like, there's ninety thousand dollars there.
We should, according to the paper, we should be eighty-seven and a half percent for the year. And the police currently are, yeah, just about eighty-nine.
Yeah. I, I, I think though that because that second line is so big a portion of the police budget and it's going to just come in at incremental amounts to pay for one officer and potentially a part-time officer. It's, there's gonna be room that's never gonna get eaten up in that line and it's gonna mean that that bottom line figure with the percent is, is not gonna exceed. It's not gonna exceed the budget for the department.
Yeah, and if, if we buy this, how long is it gonna be before delivery? It's gonna be a while.
So in the bid that we put out, we asked for them to come in and that it would be deliverable shortly after the first of the year, July, the fiscal year.
Because we're gonna, we're gonna have the same kinds of salary line savings in the month of July because all we're gonna have is one and a half or two officers and we've budgeted for.
Likely true.
Five. Correct? So it's gonna, it's gonna stay for a while. We may not get it all out of this budget.
I think you will get it all out of this budget.
Because.
That, that line is such a heavy portion of the police budget.
Right, because Officer Kelleher does not make thirty thousand dollars a month, correct?
Not the last time we looked.
You'd have a lot more police officers than thirty thousand.
I mean, I would be curious to get into some of the warranty discussions about doing the, the five years. I think that would just be good planning in general, but that doesn't necessarily depend on.
Oh, yes.
Yes, please. I was busy reading.
Joyous Emerson, I am a little puzzled because it seems like we lost a number of police officers for whom we had cruisers and it's not quite clear why we need a cruiser now.
We need, we need a cruiser now because the cruisers are aging. We've sold the worst ones out and we're trying to build a fleet where we have enough for the officers and a spare. So essentially what we have right now are two really good ones and one that we would replace with this replacement one so that our oldest cruiser wouldn't be a twenty sixteen, it would be a twenty twenty. So it's, it's a way to keep the fleet refreshed and kind of in younger status. And the reason that it seems opportune to do it now is because the FY twenty-five police budget has one more month left. And it, it has the capacity to take this payment.
So we, we would be buying it off of the budget that we approved, approved way before that the money is there because we don't have the police officers and then not having to work a cruiser into next year's budget because we did it from internally with what's there. I don't know if that says it right.
So yours, and the idea is you expect to hire new officers that will need this cruiser?
So we believe that tomorrow there's an offer, an offer being extended to an already certified officer, which would put us at free and this would be three cruisers.
Okay.
Yeah, that we would be keeping, yeah.
Thank you.
Karen.
Hi, Karen Rhodes. I'm, I'm thankful Jeff that your decision or your, your modality is to let the people that do the work pick the appropriate vehicle for the work that they do. It may be very nice to have a buggy that's electric. It may be nice, but it, if you, if you don't listen to the people that actually do the work, you're, you're selling them short and, and their opinions don't matter. So I'm gonna ask you to please listen to the people that are doing the work and, and have to do the work every day instead of just going with something that may seem vogue. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Martin?
I also tend to agree with Jeff that the people that use the equipment should know best what their needs are. I'd also suggest that specifications matter and just having a top line number is not enough to make a decision on. Operational costs are one of the things that the report that I included we included with the packet from the Energy Committee compares two vehicles, but it's not really relevant to this. But I suggest that going back and looking at what the, you know, MPG is for each vehicle, how many miles we'd expect to drive, you know, what the costs to operate are and, and, you know, hearing from a mechanic is really valuable to compare apples and apples. So it seems like more investigation wouldn't be warranted. I also think warranties would definitely be something to look into.
Mr. Hopkins?
I, I do want to, I guess, just be clearer then. So the Green Fleet policy is legitimate and I believe in it. And it sets out the parameters under which the Select Board is encouraged to consider alternate fuel vehicles, right? However, it's really important that the primary consideration here not be given to meeting a fuel efficiency standard or a carbon footprint standard when there's an officer safety standard that really has to have primacy. So the officers, you know, Chief Kachajin is a trim fellow and even Chief Kachajin with all of his gear that he wears is substantially bigger than me. And he, he's very concerned that with the equipment like the laptop and so on and so forth, it's like in the console, they want the they, they basically want the latitude there to be able to fully operate the vehicle safely and they don't feel like it's there in other than a full-sized front seat. And the Charger at this point is what, it's the second lowest bid. So if they were making this decision based on, you know, kind of traditional metrics, it would come in very, very competitively. And that, that appears to be their preference in terms of it gives them the maneuverability when they're in these stressful situations with all this equipment on, with all this equipment surrounding them. I'm, I'm not I'm not at all discounting the value of having looked at the electric vehicles. I think that one of the considerations the chief expressed to me was if we were looking for a special service vehicle, meaning not pursuit rated, he could think about a Tesla. He felt like that was more appropriate size. And in fact, the Windsor people mentioned that if they were to replace theirs, they would replace it with the Tesla Model Y for ground clearance and for some size and stuff inside. What we've got in the fleet right now doesn't really kind of have a spot. There doesn't seem to be a position for a non-pursuit related vehicle. So they, they wanted to stick with that which takes the Tesla Model Three out. But the, and the Blazer then is the electric that's still kind of in contention and the Blazer, he feels the, the space is too constricted inside.
So I did a bit of reading on the Blazer and it specifically talks about that it's different than the standard model that any of us would go and buy. So I just, I want to make sure that he was looking at the PPD Blazer, the standard Blazer. But I do agree with you that safety is fair around, obviously. So, thank you.
So, um. My reasoning has absolutely nothing to do with the value of an electric car over a gas car or any of that. It's purely a question of the environment we're in right now and the status of our police department. And I think that given that the two officers that we have have expressed a specific preference. I want them to understand and know that we respect their ideas, concerns, and that we acknowledge that they are in the best position to know what they need right now. And I don't think anyone on this board would be wanting something else or, you know, would be wanting to replace the officers' well-conserved opinions with their own. And, and so, and I think any suggestion that we would is, you know, not well-placed. So that said, I personally, right now, would go with what the chief and Officer Kelleher have told us are the ones that they would be most comfortable in, feel most safe in. And that doesn't mean that down the line, when we have another vehicle that you know, if we get more officers, we need more cruisers, I would definitely at that point encourage looking at the very least at the hybrid. But definitely at that point, but I think right now, given the current environment and the state, the status of the police department right now, that's kind of where my head is.
I'm gonna make a motion to approve we purchased G, the Dodge Charger all-wheel drive. But I'd like to see about getting the extended warranty that was mentioned.
Second.
Hey, a motion and a second. Discussion on the motion. We have a motion to go with the Charger all-wheel drive. Card G. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? No one? I would like to suggest that we ask our police chief after we get another officer to go to one of these Vermont towns and pay him for a day to get an electric car and, and see the feelings in the room. Because I, I, again, I can't help but say that so many of the comments that were thrown our way a year ago, a year and a half ago regarding the purchase of an electric car and what they wouldn't do and they wouldn't run the computers and they wouldn't be able to finish a shift, all seemed to be disproved by what you have in there. So I really, I mean, I appreciate all that information. So I, I think we should try to get our chief to go. Moving on. Item nine, Select Board Statement Regarding the Ethics Report. Before we start this one, I'm going to make a statement. My statement is that we always welcome all kinds of community involvement and conversation in it. With the exception of item nine, and I think under, I believe that over the last eight weeks, we have had everything said every different way that it could be said. I think everybody at the board table is fully aware of everybody's opinions on the ethics report. We want to make a clarification, but I would like to not take public comment on this one. And I have talked to the board and the board agreed. Now, Cecil.
So I am moving the board adopt the following statement regarding the report on the ethics complaint against the trustees of public funds, Tanner Romano and Laura Minor. At the May twelfth, twenty twenty-five meeting of the Brandon Select Board, the board approved and adopted the report on the investigation of ethics complaints against two members of the trustees of public funds regarding a pledge for twenty thousand dollars by the trustees of public funds to the Otter Valley Athletics Association. After the report was distributed, the original complainant contacted the authors of the report and demanded the report be withdrawn and changed. The complainant was upset that the report addressed the issue of potential financial conflict of interest on the part of the trustees, even though the complaints themselves did not expressly allege the existence of a financial conflict of interest. The complainant is correct that his complaints did not expressly state that either Tanner Romano or Laura Minor had an undisclosed financial interest in the outcome of their decision pledged twenty thousand dollars to the OBAA. However, both complaints did allege that the OBAA was simply acting as a pass-through for another entity and alleged that Professor Romano was a member and probable director of the VCC. A reasonable reader could understand the complaint to be concerned not only with any personal interest the trustees had in the OBAA, but also with the possibility that as a probable director of the VCC, Mr. Romano may have had financial interest in the funds request. Moreover, once the complaints were accepted by the board for investigation, the board had an independent responsibility to analyze the allegation in light of Brandon's policy on conflicts of interest in light of information gathered during the investigation. Finally, appropriate analysis of the issue required examining all the forms which a conflict of interest could manifest and address whether any of those forms were implicated. That is what the report did. The report is available for review on the town's website. Citizens are advised to read the report for themselves rather than rely on media interpretations or word of mouth. The board understands that many readers of the report have been dissatisfied with its content. That is to be expected in these situations. The board stands behind its investigation and its report and the board considers this case to be closed.
I will second the motion and see some later reading.
Motion and a second discussion on this. This will be also posted on the webpage with the original result.
Yes.
We have a motion and a second to add this to our report. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? No one. I would also like to, at this point, reiterate my point that the Brandon Select Board does not oversee the trustees of public funds, that the trustees of public funds are an elected body. At this point, there are none. So we have one task left at hand, which So we have one task left at hand, which in two weeks would be to. Name. New members to that board. We have some applicants in now. We will continue to take applications till then. And then we will pick that. That is something that the Select Board does. On any committee in town. And it, we are stated by law that we are the ones that need to do this. Whoever we name will be named, will take effect after that. But only until March, when the election comes. And in March, the people would have to petition and get their names on the ballot and run. So it's a short-term appointment that we do, but the state has advised us that that is how we do it. So once, yes.
Could I just add that's all correct, perfect, but in March, that means there will be a one-year seat, a two-year seat and a three-year seat on the ballot.
And so when that is done. And, but as far as I'm concerned as of now, because that's the only thing that we have left to do with the trustees of public funds is to name. Some new board members. I do not want to use up the time at this board. As we have no authority with the trust or anything. So I am calling it that we will not be discussing. Trustees of public funds discussions at our meeting.
And I just want to. Clarify, double clarification, that even though it's a one-year, two-year and three-year. After that, they, yes.
I was actually gonna say a trustee for a three-year term. A trustee for two years remaining of a three-year term and a trustee for one year remaining of a three-year term.
And we had actually looked into the fact of. Waiting until March and, and having the select board not be. In the position of having to name the people right now because. Seeing as though they have already made their pledges that take effect, their, their financial spending is mostly used up and. Whatever, but the state has told us that. What was the magic word?
Well, the statute says shall appoint forthwith.
We must name someone forthwith, so we will be doing that.
Not with all.
Postage, forthwith, some way. We're doing it. We all learned a lot about ethics complaints. We learned that the state no longer wants to deal with them, so they're closing their doors. And we will see where we go from here. I think we're going to make some changes to our ethics complaint policy so that we are better prepared.
Unfortunately, unlike the state, we don't just get to say, oh, we don't have the time or money, so we're not going to do it.
Right. So moving on, item ten. Summer twenty twenty-five road paving plan and funding. Mr. Hopkins.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the board. So you have my one-page memo. Our Highway Chief Jeremy Disorda has identified. Wheeler Road and Town Farm Road as being the two most likely class three roads that are in need of attention. I have three assumptions in the middle of the. Paper there. One is that you had kind of. Agreed during the budget workshop series that a hundred thousand dollars could be made available from the one percent money to do paving this year. But then we got new news from my colleague Bill Moore that the match for Union Street sidewalk is probably in the range of two hundred thousand dollars to three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So that was good news. We have news from Sue Gage that the approximate balance in the one percent fund is now four hundred eighty-seven thousand, seven hundred thirty-four dollars. We know that we have a twenty-five thousand dollar a year lease payment for the new, for the replacement highway truck. And I will say that. The roof on the town hall is gonna use up all the ARPA. And by adding in the options to redeck the roof and rebuild the chimney, it's gonna use up the. ARPA that was kicked over from the solar. Proposal. And it's gonna use up the insurance settlement from the chimney failure. And it's probably gonna need about thirty thousand dollars from presumably the one percent money. To do every aspect of the town hall roof. So those are the known obligations there. Four eighty-seven minus twenty-five thousand minus thirty thousand minus maybe two hundred thousand. So essentially, it's two hundred thousand dollars today. So we have round numbers.
So we have two options for the paving. One would be. Down Farm Road. Which would be. One sixty, which we had been planning on one hundred.
And again, this is just repaving paved, currently paved parts. This is not paving any dirt roads.
And the others, two thirty, I think we should be.
I'm a cheapo.
You say both?
No, I, I said I'm a cheapo.
I thought you said I could see both.
Yeah, no, given the choice between spending two hundred and thirty thousand dollars and one hundred and sixty thousand dollars when our highway chief doesn't see. One being more needed than the other. I tend to want to only spend one hundred and sixty thousand dollars.
You'd like to make that as a motion?
I will make that as a motion.
Oh, I've got a question. The bridge on Town Farm Road, do we have any?
We don't.
Stability of it, is it gonna be?
Oh, oh, like the assessment of the bridge? I think that bridge is actually rated in pretty good condition.
Okay.
There's, I haven't looked at the, I looked at the bridge rating inventory that the state gives us and the, the worst one is the one at the south end of Wheeler Road. And I don't recall that that Town Farm one was in particular. At a risk.
Okay.
We're talking about just above Newton Road.
Yeah, yeah, yes, because a lot of dump trucks come over that and a lot, that gets used hard. There's one neighbor up there that said it's not in very good shape.
It's narrow, you know. I can check the condition and report it back to you.
I just want to see us pave it to the bridge and have it.
And then have the bridge.
Do you like to make a motion?
Yeah, I move that we go out to bid on Town Farm Road paving to be funded with money from the local option.
Motion in a second to. Do one sixty-ish on Town Farm Road. Out of one percent money. Any other discussion? None heard. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. No one's opposed. Moving on. Item eleven, favorite part of the meeting, public comment. Comment. Brent Buehler. I was almost thinking nobody was gonna speak, Brent. Here we go.
No, Brent Buehler. As the complainant of the ethics complaint, I want to go on the record personally as saying I never alluded to or alleged there was financial impropriety on the part of Tanner Romano. Or Laura Minor. Thank you and thank you for your mentor.
Additional public comment. Motion to adjourn in a second. All in favor?
Aye.